Evening, everyone. Welcome to our August 12, 2020 Summers Planning Board meeting. Uh, let's start with the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America.
And to the record, which stands. One nation, God.
Under God.
The state of the free.
We live in a world.
Justice for all.
Thank you very much. Um, Saret, did you please do the roll call?
Yes. Chairman Curry.
Here.
Uh, Ms. Gannon.
Here.
Ms. Gobino.
Here.
Mr. Goldenberg.
Here.
Mr. Matt Namara.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Zaberto.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, before we start, I'd just like to thank a couple of people. Um, like I said before, Chris, thank you very much for suggesting rightfully so that we check everybody to be here tonight. And Vicky, thank you very much for taking on the chore of handling the calls. Um, appreciate it. Sounds like, uh, because we're gonna keep some public hearings open. Um, and since you didn't volunteer to not do it, it sounds like you're gonna be hopefully doing it again for us at the next meeting. Thank you in advance. Uh, and also, I just realized, um, a few days ago, I never thanked Barbara for all her years of dedication to working with this board. Um, I hope sincerely sometime things pick up, the town will be able to bring her back into the office. I don't know, maybe that's not gonna happen, but, uh, I just want for the record to thank her for all her years working with the, with the planning board. It was always a pleasure working with her.
Yes, it was a lot of fun.
Yes. Um, first on our agenda, we have two sets of, um, minutes for approval. One is from May 13th, 2020. Is there any, um, changes to correction? I didn't see anything for any, oh, yes, I did see, so I take that back. I think Dennis had a correction, but I think that was the June one. Is that right, Dennis?
Yes.
Okay, is there any corrections or, um, additions to the May 13th? If not, I'll make a motion that we accept the, um, minutes as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, second, we had, uh, the minutes from June 10th, 2020, and I believe probably all saw, um, Dennis had one change in that. Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah.
And I, and I had one more change.
Okay, then the, the two changes.
And they were made.
And okay, so with the two changes made, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from Jan- June 10th, 2020.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. All right, first on our agenda is, um, public hearing for the Blue Stone Peak Academy. Um, I guess we have to legally open this before we close it, correct, and adjourn it? I don't, I'm sorry, not close before we, uh, postponed it till the next week. Is that correct? Don't we have to open it anyhow?
I thought we, we carry it through. We never closed it. It was never closed.
Oh, okay. All right, then, then I'll make a motion that we adjourn the public hearing until September 9th, 2020, which is our next planning board meeting.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And next on our, I'm sorry? Okay, and next on the agenda is, uh, the Hanford Wetland and Water Course Permit. Um, why don't we, before I open the public hearing, why don't we, uh, see if there's any comments from the applicant? And then I'll hear from, um, I assume Jennifer, you're, you're, uh, representing Woodard and Current tonight, so we'll listen to your comments, and then I'll open the public hearing. And we'll, and, uh, and we'll read into it the testimony from the one that we have had so far. So is there any comments from the, um, applicants representative?
No.
From, um?
They're doing this right now.
Yes? No? Who's, who's representing Hanford Wetland?
I, I am.
Do you have any?
William Besherat, sorry.
Sure. Um. Do you have any comments that you'd like to put into the record tonight?
No, as far as I know, we, the, the engineer Roy Frederickson has been working with the wetland, uh, on, uh, the resolve and everything. We have introduced, uh, infiltrators to accommodate the roof runoff, not for the swimming pool. The patio around the swimming pool is gonna be a pervious material with treatment underneath it, uh, you know, the gravel base. And, um, as far as I know, everything has been kinda addressed, and if there's any additional items who has, would have to be addressed, we'll be more than happy to take care of them.
Okay. Um, Jennifer, before I open the public hearing, do you have any comments? I mean, I, I noticed when I looked at the Woodard and Current memo, there was, the majority of items were not addressed.
Yeah, that's correct, because, um, although, you know, the infiltrators are now being proposed to treat the existing impervious surfaces. Um, within the wetland buffer, we still don't, uh, we need the calculations to be revised, and I discussed that with the engineer. And we need the required perk tests and the deep hole tests to prove, um, the feasibility of implementing or installing an infiltration practice. And we would need calculations and any required testing for the treatment that is being proposed also for the new impervious surfaces. So that still has to be ironed out. Overall, the stormwater management, um, is a large piece that we will be, uh, working with the engineer to, um, resolve.
Okay. Um, then what I'm gonna do is before I, uh, uh, ask for your recommendation on, on, on whether we should maybe, um, prepare a resolution, what I'd like to do is open the public hearing. So first, let me ask Saret, um, has notice been made into the paper, the date of it, and, uh, for, and has posting taken place?
Yes, legal notice was published in July 30th, 2020, and adjoining property owners were notified via mail on 7/30/2020.
Okay. Um.
I believe we, we, I believe we heard.
We only, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to say, I believe we heard from one of the neighbors, property owner.
Yes, as far as I know.
Wanted to be assured.
Right, no, I, I'm gonna read that. Um, Sandra, I'm not sure how to pronounce her, pronounce her last name, but I'll spell it, A-L-T-S-C-H-U-L-E-R. And it was sent August 2nd, 2020 at, uh, 4:18. And I'm gonna read what, what she had, her comments were.
I'm sure.
I am received with a public notice sent to me for the above, and my questions are twofold. Was an environmental impact report done, and what is the impact to the wells of the homes in the area? Uh, I guess if, Jennifer, do you feel comfortable answering those two questions at this point? That's what we would kind of do if we had a, if we had, if we were meeting publicly, and I, somebody would answer the questions. Does that make sense?
Yes, I mean, I would prefer to, um, follow up with Joe if that is okay.
Okay.
All right, I, I have a, a question of, of Jennifer, she might be able to answer. Um, this is an in-ground pool.
Right.
And, um, I'm familiar roughly with the area where the pool is being put. Can you tell me what the elevation of where that pool is going? And the elevation of Route 202 below it? What is the difference? In other words, how far up is that pool above Route 202?
I'm not sure what the elevation for what Route 202 is, but the pool.
Well below it.
The pool is based on the plan around elevation like 464, around there.
Uh huh.
About 464, yeah, that would figure. Okay, approximately 450 feet. The, I, the reason I'm raising the question, having lived here for 56 years and having driven below that development as it developed. It occasionally is, Route 202 is occasionally impacted by runoff from the higher elevation. I asked the question, and I realize that's why Joe is asking for certain information. But I just wanted to put two and two together.
May I answer that question?
Physically, you will impact runoff in, in some manner, and the infiltration, uh, aspects of are to mitigate all that, I would assume.
Yeah, that's correct.
May I?
Sure.
The, um, the, uh, any additional water due to impervious will be completely 100% treated on site. So there will be zero impact from the additional impervious surfaces that are added onto Bonnyello Drive, that along 202, which is, nothing, everything will remain on the street. I'm sorry, not Bonnyello, uh, Londonberry, which is below it.
Okay.
So, you know, I mean, like, we, we are treating all the impervious area and plus additionally more from the roof itself. As, uh, Mr. Babagalo suggested that we need to do. So the treatment is not only for the surface from, you know, the swimming pool, which is the, uh, the pavers that we are proposing are pervious pavers. But we are treating additional impervious that's existed on the property, which is from the roof itself.
I have a question for Mr. Besherat.
Yes, sir.
Uh, with this pool, and, and this is possibly to address the, uh, the resident's question about the wells. And, uh, is there any concern that maybe the pool water itself could leach through the, uh, the bottom surface of the pool into the water table, or is that generally something that does not happen with in-ground pools?
I can answer that question. As a matter of fact, I have on the phone with me the contractor and the representative of the company that manufactures the swimming pool. This swimming pool is a one-piece unit, which is made out of fiberglass. If it leaks, that means that pool has to be ripped up immediately, okay? The odds of it leaking are slim to none and beyond. It's, like I said, it's one piece. It's not like it can, you know, they're put in pieces on site with ganite or stucco or, or, or a liner. No, this is one solid piece of, um, fiberglass. It comes like a tub and gets installed in one day. Uh, the, the water itself is not chlorinated, it's solid, and it's self-contained. There's no backwashing to the system. The water will have to be at, the, the pool will have to be full at all time to maintain balance of a pressure from the outside and the inside. So there is no backwashing, there's no dumping of water at all in this, and there's no chemicals are being used in, 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 in the treatment, such as chlorine or what have you.
So would you feel comfortable in saying that the pool water itself, uh, should not, if the fiberglass insert does what it's supposed to do, will not contaminate the wells in the area?
Absolutely, yes, I would say that.
Thank you, Mr. Besherat.
Also, you fill the pool using Durkin or a similar service.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does anybody know, does anybody know the depth of the, does anybody know the depth of the wells in that area?
I don't.
That would probably vary site to site. I mean, I, I, I have a neighbor whose well is 30, 40 feet different than mine.
Yeah, that's, that's neither here nor there, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I don't think, I don't think there's any, you can't really determine, you could, you could literally have somebody within 50 feet of you that has significant difference depth.
No, I was just bringing up that, uh, when, when I lived and I had a well, it was, you know, 150 to 200 feet deep. So, uh, uh, a, a pool that's eight feet deep, uh, is gonna have hardly any effect on going down another 150 feet. That's all I was asking for.
Yeah.
Um, if I may answer that, the pool at the, at the, at the deepest section of it is seven feet, it goes back down to three and a half feet. Now, the area, the area where it's sloping, uh, the, where, where the area in the back is a slope, and so the, the pool, wherever it's gonna be dug from the pool, will be added around the pool to create level. So the really, the depth of the hole that's gonna be dug for the pool is gonna be maximum four feet.
Okay.
Okay, I gotcha. Yep. Um, well, Saret, do you have any comments on this? I'm sorry, I forgot to ask you.
Yes, no, I do not.
Okay, um, uh, everybody saw the, uh, Woodard and Current, um, recommendation, and I, I, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but Jennifer, did you, do your, your office feel, um, confident that, that the outstanding items can be addressed and satisfied? Um, would you think we should suggest, um, having a resolution be prepared?
Uh, yeah, our recommendation is that we could go into resolution with, you know, the conditions in our review memo, and then between our office and the applicant's engineer, we can resolve all the outstanding comments.
Okay, okay.
John, I have no comments coming in on the text message.
Thank you, okay. Um, so you know what, I would just suggest, um, if somebody, um, from the applicants, or one of the engineers from the applicant's office, if you would, would you just respond back to that lady's, um, two comments, if you don't mind? I think that would be the, the right way to do it, because obviously we don't have the, the back and forth that we would have in a normal meeting. Um, if you could just answer her two questions, if you don't mind.
Right now, or should we send it via email?
No, no, just, just send a letter, you know, I, I, I think, I, well, I'm not, I'm just speaking for myself, I think you've answered the questions for us, but I, I think the right thing to do would be just to answer back to her, um, she, she did take the.
I see no, nothing wrong with that, no problem.
We put a copy to our office.
Yeah, a copy, yes.
That's what we'll do.
Definitely a copy, planning office.
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, how does the board feel? Do you, you feel comfortable having, um, a resolution be prepared for my signature?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll make that motion that, um.
Well, first, John, John.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to close the public hearing, I apologize, yep. I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and second then, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, um, ask staff to prepare a, uh, resolution for chairman's signature. Um, assuming that all the items have been, uh, taken care of, and we're also in receipt of the response letter to the, um, to Sandra. Is there, second?
I'll second. Yep, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, have a great evening, and we will take care of the, the comments that you, that came up tonight.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The pool party, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next on our, we have two, um, mobiles, um, applications. One is for the T-Mobile LLC application for the 335 Route 100 in the Somers Town Shopping Center. Um, before I, uh, open the public hearing, Saret, was, um, that notice posted and, um, property owners, adjacent property owners, uh, notified? And was the sign applied?
Yes, uh, published in the Summers Record, legal notice on July 30th. Uh, joining property owners notified by mail on 7/30, and a sign stating the date and location of the public hearing was posted on the site on July 28th, 2020.
All right. Um, well, I guess for the duration of this meeting, I'll open the public hearing, and then, um, since we're gonna continue it till September 9th, we'll see if there's any, any responses from anyone. So I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing, um, tonight.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and then, um.
Mr. Chairman, this is.
Go ahead.
I, I apologize, Mr. President, this is Joe Ariel, and I am in an area of some connectivity problems, and I'm afraid that I may drop. So if you don't mind, um, I, if I could clarify, Mr. Kenny, what I, what I think will, will spring to the board of our conversation, about, get on it, and, and, um, the applicant's attorney, and, 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 uh, come, uh, we were gonna put off the public hearing part, because they were going back to their junior to see whether this get closer to the line that we picked around in that phone call. I think their most recent letter gets much closer, and I know that Jennifer has sort of a comment from Joe on that. But there's this kind of one piece that I think we, we still felt like we were missing. I wonder, Mr. Kenny, if you could just, what is your understanding, since it was there, you know? Um, uh, so, that was, um, all these, it moves to come, just part of this conversation before it pops in the board, loses its seat of business, if you don't mind coming.
Okay, though, I don't know how all of you interpreted that. Could you hear that, or?
No.
Not a single word.
What I interpreted, uh, Joe Ariel, if you can hear me, and when I finish just saying, yes, I'm right or no, is that, uh, one, uh, we were going to open the hearing and adjourn it, not take testimony, uh, uh, until the meeting of September 9th. And second, that he wanted, uh, comments from, uh, he mentioned David Kenny, who is not here tonight, but from his colleague, uh, Mr. Fry. So, Mr. Fry, uh, if you could comment on your understanding.
Sure, uh, for the record, Jordan Fry, partner at the law firm of Snyder, Snyder 94 White Plains Road, here on behalf of T-Mobile Northeast LLC, three, for 325 Route 100. Um, it's my understanding, uh, with my colleague David Kenny, um, that there was a discussion, uh, with the, the town engineer in our office. And, um, there's some more information or clarification that's required on the structural certification letter, which our, uh, firm is, uh, working on, uh, obtaining, and, um, will be providing. So we have no issue with, uh, adjourning the public hearing to September, uh, 9th.
Okay. So do we wanna, do we wanna do any, any discussion tonight on the coverage information or anything, or do, wait, do it till the 9th?
Till the 9th.
Well, that's not, but that doesn't have to be part of a public hearing, that can just be.
No.
Uh, issue and issues that if, uh, the board needs any more information, or if they're satisfied, I think the applicant would like to know that. So that's, uh, really, you had asked for information regarding the coverage, they provided a map showing the coverage. And, um, the board should indicate that it is satisfied with what's been provided, or if it has any questions.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Yeah, I have a question, um, it isn't terribly important, it's just because I went through the code book and I couldn't find it. We require a backup, uh, power, batteries. What specifically is it that we require? What, what, what does our code say?
Who are you asking, Nancy?
Whoever has the answer.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I went to the code book and I couldn't find it, I just know we require it. And, um, and I, obviously, I'm, I'm sure they've done it, but I don't specifically know what it is we require for a backup. Is it two batteries, two automobile batteries? I mean, specifically, I don't know what it is we require for backup power at, at the, uh, at the, at the T-Mobile sites.
Uh, I can't answer that, Nancy, I'm not aware that that is one of the items. Uh, have you seen it in the code?
Uh, well, I, I go back to when we initially did it, and put these, both, both these up, going, you know, back 15 years or whatever it was. And, uh, we required backup batteries, and I, um, lost sight, it's now a germane issue. And I, and I couldn't find reference to what it is we really require. Is it enough for two days?
Uh, I thought it was 48 hours.
It was what?
Forty-eight hours, two days.
Forty-eight, two days. But I can't find the reference that says that, that was what I was hoping somebody could do for me. I don't know if Joe Arioli hears me or not, if he could look it up and give me the reference.
So I, I, I can.
I have reasons for asking, because the county wants to put forth their own code.
So I can tell you that, uh, Mr. Godiosso's letter that was submitted dated July, uh, 29th, 2020, explains to the board that T-Mobile uses an industrial battery designed for wireless facilities that's, uh, provided to power up the facility. Um, and I do understand that the, the, these batteries aren't compliant with FCC requirements, uh, which would, which is what would govern. So they are, they are industrial batteries, and they do meet.
That's why I didn't find it, it was an FCC requirement, not a town requirement, okay. I'm satisfied.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I probably got the same phone call you did too, Nancy, about proposed legislation. And, and I think what we, what we ought to do is just ask Joe, I, I would not hold up this application or anything else, but.
Yeah, just need to do that.
The same way that we ask, uh, fire installations to switch over to a generator with the backup, because, I mean, obviously, the newer ones have that. Uh, but I guess it would require legislation to, to mandate that.
Yeah, and I just know that the county is proposing something for backup, as a result of what went on last night.
But I, and my, my question was, I mean, because obviously they don't all fall in that category, is what about the ones that are grandfathered, that, you know, that, which these two fall into, obviously.
Yeah.
Can Mr. Fry tell us, besides telling us that it approved, that it meets the FCC communicate, FCC standards, what those standards are?
Um, I don't, I, I don't know the exact standards, but we can provide it on the next, uh, the, the next meeting. I do know that they require battery backup, and, and, um, you know, that the carriers are required to comply with that, and, and based on Mr. Godiosso's, uh, letter, he's confirmed it does have the necessary battery backup. But we can look into that and, and circle back.
Yeah, just get us the information, we, how, how many hours the backup is for. Thank you.
But the only thing I can tell you, I don't know what the FCC regulation is, but the letter from Godiosso indicated that, uh, the T-Mobile site has, uh, battery backup for 24 hours.
Wow, that doesn't do us any good, okay.
Yeah, that's.
And if that meets FCC regulations, I don't know. That's what we want Mr. Fry to tell us.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have to believe that it does, because I don't think it would have been approved initially, if it didn't, doesn't that make sense?
Yeah, that does make sense. Right, John.
Yeah, but do, do we base our approvals on federal regulations?
We don't have any choice.
Yeah, well, if, if there's nothing else in the code, then we have no choice.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but my, my, my question is, are we aware of the federal regulations to enforce them? Is, is it codified somewhere within our.
Well, historically, we always asked about it, I just couldn't hang on to how long, how much the backup was, and I thought it was in our code book. I now learn it's why I couldn't find it, it's an FCC regulation. But when we did it, the work originally, we always inquired and made sure it was there.
Well, I certainly think if there is, uh, county legislation, that it's something that, uh, the board will be able to hang its hat on. And anytime there is somebody who comes back for any type of change, renewal, et cetera, that's when you'll be able to, uh, you know.
Right.
That require.
Let's hope, yes. All right, so, um, is, is there any, any more comments on this item? Then I, what I'll do is, I guess we'll just, do we, I guess we have to make a formal, uh, motion to adjourn the meeting until September 9th, 2020, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so move then.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, all right, so then our, our last, uh, item is, is the T-Mobile, um, LLC application for 80 Route 6, which is commonly known as the Somers Common Shopping Center. Uh, this is very similar to the, to the first one. Um, I'll ask you, Saret, was a notice posted in the paper, and the pro, adjoining property owners, and also was a sign posted?
Yes, uh, legal notice was published in Summers Record on July 30th, 2020. Adjoining property owners were notified via mail on 7/30/2020, and the sign stating the date and location of the public hearing was posted on the site July 28th, 2020.
Okay, um, well, then I'll, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing and adjourn it also until September 9th, 2020.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and I, well, I, I'm assuming that the structural integrity layer and, and the adequacy of coverage, unless anybody has any specific questions about this one, will be answered between now and then, does that, does that make sense?
The same issues on both, and I have one other question, are these G4 or G5?
You're, 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 are you, you're asking if it's. You're, are you, you're asking if it's for five G or four? I'll make sure that that question's answered.
On both.
Hey, you look great, Dennis.
I'm sorry?
Nancy just gave you a compliment, Dennis.
She gave you a compliment, just say.
Thank you.
Thank you, and many more, please. Any other board member comments?
I just want to say for the record that neither of these applications had text messages coming in on them. I know we just opened and adjourned them, but nobody was virtually in the room through the text message wanting to make a comment.
Okay.
And thank you, Vicki, you know, it's kind of like when you were a child doing the dishes, if you don't drop any, you get to keep doing them. So I'm going to ask you to please do it at the next meeting.
Happy to do it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Any other board member comments?
No comment.
If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn our next planning board meeting to September ninth, two thousand and twenty, at seven thirty, and I wish everybody stay safe, take care, and try to enjoy whatever we can enjoy.
Well, let's hope we have power.
Yes.
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 By September, I certainly hope we do.
You know, and I was just talking to somebody today, yes, it's terrible, we lost power, and it's an inconvenience, but if you look at the newspaper and see other parts of the country where there was loss of life and loss of structures.
That's true.
Yeah, we're basically just inconvenient.
You've got, you got that right.
That's a good point.
Yeah, yeah. Looking for a second to close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again very much, good night.
Thank you, have a good evening. Good night.